All right, we'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. I will start by acknowledging that the town of Bridgewater is in Mi'kmaqie, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing non-Kevan motion to approve the agenda is circulated. Counselor Caldwell, second to five, Ash Thorburn, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Are there announcements from members of council?
Always looking at counsel for our run.
Well, I'll give you one little update. We had a nice pickleball tournament on the weekend, over 300 players in rural, and what we need here is a Cougar Dome.
What's it called?
Cougar Dome.
Sounds like a Mad Max movie.
But anyway, it's a sports facility with many facilities inside. You can play soccer into it, you can play pickleball. It's basically used for tennis. But it's a big dome over everything with a nice concrete floor. Yeah, awesome facility, awesome event.
And I believe, does Poppy Drive start this?
Poppy Drive starts this Friday. It's always last Friday in October, and it runs to November the 10th, is serviced on November 11th.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other announcements from members of council? I'll just, probably just a quick one, we were talking about this before the camera started rolling. Obviously, the province announced their housing strategy last week. We're going to discuss it in tonight's agenda. I was pleased to have a conversation with the premier today about that. And so I just, I'll probably make these comments again later, but wanted to just start by saying, I was pleased to learn that this is a working document. The plan that was released is not set in stone. I know I raised some concerns last week about some things I thought were missing, based on information that we've gathered, conversations we've had with people. So I was, I was happy to hear that this isn't the end of it. This is probably just the beginning of it, so that was good. Anything else? No? Then we move down to new staff introductions. I see our Director of Community Development is here, so I will turn it over to Mrs. McDonald.
Hello, nice to be here. And I'm especially thrilled to be introducing Energize Bridgewater Project Coordinator, Emily Cappan. So she started with us in the middle of September. Emily holds a master's degree in social anthropology from DOWL. And since 2009, she's worked in a variety of roles and volunteer positions related to social equity research, social equity research and collaborative projects, often with public sector partners, including the Nova Scotia Public Interest Research Group and the Eastern Kings Community Health Board. And since 2018, she's worked as the Managing Editor of The Grapevine, which is an arts and culture paper circulating in the Annapolis Valley. And in 2019, she took on some contract, contract position with the Office of Research and Graduate Studies at Acadia University, writing and designing promotional material to support industry and academic partnerships. And previous to taking on this position, she was also working at the Wolfville Memorial Library. So as you can see, Emily brings a wealth of experience into this role. With Energize Bridgewater, she's the project coordinator who's really our, I think recently we were calling her the fixer. And she's really helping us with the workflow management in the re-sculpted Energize Bridgewater team. And so, Emily, welcome. This is Town Council.
Welcome, Emily. We're pleased to have you on the team. Welcome to arguably the most comfortable chairs in Lindbergh County. Moving on, never told another, no. Okay. Have we already the minutes of October 12th regular council meeting? Any errors or omissions on those? Hearing non-Kevan motion to approve. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Tanner, second to five, Counselor McDonald, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. We're down to planning items. So 654 Glen Allen Drive, we have application for development agreement and notice of public participation meeting. Mr. Brown is here to walk us through that one.
Okay, thank you. Staff have received an application for a development agreement for proposed 444-unit collective-style residential development at 654 Glen Allen Drive. It's a former Kirks Forestry site across the Le Havre Athletic Fields. The development would consist of five multi-unit dwellings ranging in size from 72 to 90 units, 18 houndhouse units in four blocks, and 13 single-unit dwellings. In the initial application, the applicant proposed 40 of the 444 units as affordable. The density bonus triggered by the affordable units would require 38 affordable units. However, since then, staff and the applicants continue to work toward increasing the supply of more affordable or attainable units. The applicant, Summer Lead Properties Incorporated, has set a goal to have 50% of the units meet the town's definition of affordable housing. And so we're still working on the affordable housing component to this project. Development plan also includes three new public streets, a Central Park and Trails. Staff are currently reviewing the proposal. And the next step is a public participation meeting. The report suggests November 3rd. However, there's still a lot to go through and evaluate, so that meeting will likely take place, take place closer to the end of November. And what staff will do is send a memo to council to that effect once that meeting date is solidified. After the public participation meeting, staff will bring forward the planning analysis report and a recommendation for council's consideration. Today's briefing is simply an introduction. I will take any questions that council has.
Perfect. Yes, questions for Nick? Counselor Caldwell?
I have a few questions.
Yep, fire away.
The infrastructure needs to support this development, how are we doing with, how are we going to accommodate this with our current infrastructure?
Right. So I will say that town has implementation policy, that the town engineer reviews these development proposals as they come in. He is still reviewing this proposal. That's one of the reasons why we've pushed the public participation meeting out a little bit. So I haven't yet received comments back from the town engineer. But with respect to wastewater, the wastewater better recharge by law was put in place for this very reason, to accrue monies, $1,500 per unit as a development fee to help build capital, to create capacity within that wastewater system through capital upgrades. And so, staff no longer ask for a wastewater offsetting study. Staff are no longer looking to applicants to offset their wastewater contribution to our system through, through, you know, construction projects and infrastructure-related upgrades. The wastewater better recharge by law captures that. As far as other infrastructure is concerned, you know, the sewer may actually have a gravity feet directly to the wastewater treatment plant. That's what's been proposed. Mayor Tanner engineers reviewing that. Otherwise, the capacity in the system, the Glen Allen to Le Havre to wastewater treatment plant system, the pipe sizes are good. There's adequate water supply. And this proposal includes a stormwater management plan with stormwater detention pond.
Okay. So there was talk in the documents I was reviewing about the, there's a park, park space set aside in the development. And I know sometimes we can also take cash and loo for parks elsewhere. It's right next to Generations Active Park, which is, needs some development. Is there any thought about somehow transferring some of the money into Generations Active Park?
Yeah. And as I said, there are a few things we're still working through, affordable housing being one. The Central Park that they proposed, initially this development was proposed as a condominium. And so that Central Park was part of the full property. It was going to be privately held by the Condominium Association. They have changed that approach, and at this time, they are looking at this development as rental and potentially perhaps some freehold if they're able to subdivide and sell some of the lower density stuff. When these types of developments become rental, then a central park like what they proposed to the developer, it's better off they're able to donate that to the town so the town can develop it, manage it. So right now, that would be if they had the ultimate, if they had the decision in the end, they would look for this park to become a public park. However, because this is a development agreement, staff are negotiating that. And today, we had a conversation about that park remaining private because of all the ample supply of parkland in that area, which Generations Active Park and Le Havre Ballfields. So in saying that, if staff is able, and ultimately council has that decision to make, if the developer has to provide parkland or cash, we would prefer cash. That's staff's position at this time. Because that cash can go towards those existing parks in the area. Town doesn't need another park right there.
Right. And just one more question. So there's been some back and forth on the amount of affordable housing in the development. Will we have some assurances on a minimum number of affordable units there?
Yes, most definitely. Yeah. So definitely in time for the planning analysis report.
Those are good questions. So from Counselor Caldwell's questions, I have two. So you did mention the town's definition of affordable. So that's, that will be when this comes forward, hopefully kind of firmed up, right? Because I know that one of the issues we have, and again, we're going to talk about that when we get to the Housing Commission report, is that there is no consensus on what the definition of affordable is in our province. So that was good to hear that you mentioned that. And then, the parks question, do we need to look at our, our policy? Because I would argue that we don't need any more parks. So as we have more and more large developments, there's, I'm going to call it the risk, the risk that we are donated a number of green spaces. Donation is not free, right? We have to now maintain these, ensure them, all those things. And we, to your point, we have an adequate supply of parks right now. That would be enhanced by the offsetting money instead of more park that would arguably cost more, therefore take away from the park budget. So should we be looking at that policy? Because I don't think we need that right now.
Nick's actually bringing forth a report to the next discussion session, an open space report that that's been worked on for a while. And that's one of the recommendations in there is that we be selective about when we accept land and where, and look at cash and loo for, you know, alternatives to that. So it's coming to you for debate.
People are going to think we set this up now.
I think it was.
That was, what a team. We didn't, we didn't talk about that before. Other questions from council? No? That's great. So we'll look forward to some information when the public meeting will, will take place. Great. Thank you. We are down to really probably the meat of the night, which is the Nova Scotia Affordable Housing Commission Report and Update on Proposed Work Plan. So I see the screen is on, I'm sensing there's a presentation.
So staff, staff had prepared a report for council on the Housing Commission's report that was issued earlier this year. And we promised to come back with kind of an update to that. And of course, last week, the province announced some initiatives that they would be undertaking, some of which came out of the Housing Commission, and also to look at the implementation of the, I believe it was 17 recommendations within the Housing Commission report. So on your agenda, you have a report from, from staff that kind of summarizes where the town could go in terms of looking at initiatives, and also how last week's announcement has, what, what implications that may have for the town.
Thank you, Tammy. So to be, you know, as Tammy just said, to reiterate that, the information report that was circulated and put on the agenda tonight is from July. It was our planner Nelson Nolan's last report that he submitted, and unfortunately, it got bumped from the August council meeting, so he wasn't able to present it to you. And at that point, it was looking at the recently, at that point, recently released Nova Scotia Affordable Housing Commission, their 17 recommendations, and how, what staff brought forward in March of last year as what, you know, what, what we saw our role in affordable housing was, and what options and what work we could be doing. We looked at, so what did the Affordable Housing Commission suggest, and where did that line up with the work plan items we had discussed with you in March of 2021? Fast forward, it kept getting bumped from very heavy agendas that you've had over the last couple of months, and also because we thought maybe we might hear something from the new government. And then we finally said, let's just put it on the agenda. And after it was submitted to the agenda, we received the new government's provincial housing strategy that they released late last week. So we did not update the, the report that was submitted in July. Instead, we had just pushed that forward on the agenda. And what we did do after it was already in the queue was we did go through the recently released, just on October 20th, that provincial housing strategy, Healthy Nova Scotia: Solutions for Housing and Homelessness. And it was good to hear some of what you heard, Mayor Mitchell, around sort of that it's a living document. So the government in this said they're continuing to implement the 17 recommendations of the Affordable Housing Commission, so that's good news. And, you know, affordable housing can include, we decided it was important to include this continuum because affordable housing can include housing provided by private, public, and nonprofit sectors. And it can go right from market home ownership on the far right-hand side through to ways to address issues of homelessness. This is a Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation sort of continuum of housing. So it can include a wide range. You heard Nick Brown earlier tonight say attainable housing, which is slightly different than affordable housing. And further to your, your comment, Mayor Mitchell, around the definition of affordable, most definitions are quite, quite consistent, saying it's 30% of household income. The inconsistent piece is that household income varies, and it varies by household. And there is a lack of information around rental rates and, and overall demographics, which generally we get on a five-year cycle through StatsCan. So understanding, and the rental rates change greatly on a, on an annual basis, and this has been a year like no other. I know the rent on the house beside us went from $1,000 to $1,800 overnight when the property changed hands. So getting that, that, as a small community, we don't get regular information about rental rates, and they often don't change fast enough. So that definition of affordability can change overnight, right? So that is part of the inconsistency. So in looking at the actions committed in this strategy released last week, we wanted to map them to the different types of housing on the housing continuum. So in, for the commitments around addressing issues of homelessness, they're talking about new funding provided to deliver services to families who are homeless, and that the ministers will meet with community groups who support people experiencing homelessness. In relation to emergency shelters, this new strategy will provide Indigenous permanent shelter and supportive housing supports for the Mi'kmaq Native Friendship Center in Halifax. Emergency shelter investments, including extension of some of the COVID measures, and they're going to address shelter Nova Scotia funding challenges. Related to transitional housing, so that's dealing with people coming out of a variety of vulnerable situations. New funding is going to be provided to deliver services to families who are at risk of homelessness, and to explore family support pilot for rural Nova Scotians. I'm really curious about that one. Supports, there'll be more supports for people transitioning out of correctional facilities, and funding for the hotel shelter model, which includes some of that 24/7 wraparound supports. When it comes to social housing, the commitments were less, there was nothing that we could pinpoint directly to social housing. For the affordable rental housing, the commitments in that, that strategy talks about 35 million to support new, more than 1,100 new affordable housing units in Nova Scotia. We don't know where exactly those will be, but we anticipate the majority will be in Halifax. They are moving forward with inclusionary zoning, and in fact, have already tabled legislative change to the Municipal Government Act and the Halifax Regional Charter just last week. So they, they brought those in at the same time, so I'm not sure when that goes to law amendments, but we'll be...
Today.
Today?
It was today.
Law amendments for today? They're moving fast. Great. They will meet with municipalities to discuss better regulation for short-term rental units, which as we know, is not as big an issue here in Bridgewater at the present moment, but certainly is a large issue that impacts our neighboring municipalities in our region. Around affordable home ownership, they're going to identify a list of provincially owned properties that can be better used for housing. They're going to look at legislation to create a task force focused on analyzing and improving appropriate residential projects in the Halifax area. And they're going to look at flexibility and taxation to encourage affordable housing development. For market rental housing, they're looking at legislation to be introduced to create a 2% rent cap on rent increases, as well as something to protect tenants against rent evictions. And when it comes to market home ownership, they're talking about reviewing the And when it comes to market home ownership, they're talking about reviewing the training ratio for apprentices with the goal of creating more opportunities while easing the skilled labor shortage when it comes to the trades. And to waive provincial income tax on the first $50,000 of income for trades workers under the age of 30. So, relevant to us here in the town of Bridgewater, the inclusionary zoning to require or encourage affordable housing, rent cap legislation to limit the increases to 2%, the $35 million for 1,100 if any of those come outside of Halifax. Hopefully, some may be here in Bridgewater. That the province will work to recruit and retain more apprentices. We know that the businesses in our community, the trades in our community are still also experiencing some of those shortages. They're identifying the provincially-owned properties that can be used for housing. It's not as relevant here based on the type of, of ownership and land that they own here in the province. They'll meet with municipalities to discuss other measures that will support affordable housing so the short-term rentals have flexible taxation. We definitely, I say we, but the town, in that letter signed by you, Mayor Mitchell, had identified, in response to the Housing Commission, had identified some taxation things that perhaps could be improved upon for affordable housing. And the student housing strategy to be developed and housing built for NSCC. Those campuses have been identified as acrely ivony and bictle campuses. Nick did this map, or Nick and Erin provided this map, just briefly. So, just to show, there's, you know, DNR, TIR, like which provincially-owned properties are there? And they all have active, active, whether it's for the hospital or the courthouse or school. There's not a lot of land that would be sort of surplus and available for residential housing pieces. And that's it.
The TIR land at the top, what's that being used for?
Not sure. It's vacant?
Nothing.
Nothing.
So, could that be used for housing? Or? Like, there's not a lot on that map that they own in Bridgewater that could. But that seemed like a, that seemed like.
A little bit of top there, yeah.
So, there is an opportunity maybe there?
Servicing would be the challenge.
That's above the 55-meter contour.
And I don't know what they mean when they're like, oh, we're going to identify.
Correct, it's not going to happen overnight.
We're going to identify provincially-owned land for housing. But then, what, for us to do it, for a private developer? You're going to give it away? Are you going to do it? When I say you, I mean the province. Like, I don't know, does that become cross prohibited because it is above the 55-meter contour? I don't, I don't know. Counselor Callow?
I was just wondering if there also might be suitable land at the bottom of Logan Road near the river?
That's the park right now, the DNR park.
Do you know what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's also adjacent, directly adjacent to the, the river and, and functions. The contour is there, I think quite a bit of that is floodplain. So, coastal protection is also pretty critical right there. Anyway, this was, this was meant, I sort of, I think I surprised Nick by throwing it in here, but not meant as the main discussion point this evening. So, I'm just going to go back to the beautiful picture of downtown.
It's good to show it though, because I think maybe a lot of people think there's lots of provincial land, but there's, there's not. Even I was curious how much and what would be useful, so.
Any other questions?
There's got to be questions or comments about this. Maybe not about this presentation, but certainly about the, the overall plan presented by the, by the province. I know I had, I had, I had concerns. We talked about Halifax-centric, so somebody asked me why I thought it was Halifax-centric. Well, the word Halifax appears eight times in a seven-page document. The most times that the word municipalities appear, it's either municipalities will, or it's Municipal Government Act, or things like that. So, there's not, it is for now Halifax-centric. Now, again, in conversations today, I've learned that discussions will start to happen. We saw on the report that this fall and winter, the minister will, will be, the minister responsible will be speaking to municipalities. First call is Wednesday. Hopefully, he'll start asking us what, what we're hearing. But I'm curious to know around the table what, what the thoughts are and what's been released and what we can start our conversation with the province, with our constituents, with developers in terms of this plan and where we, where we kind of want to put things together and where we want to go. Counselor Callow?
Yeah, I hope that, I, I think the, the province's plan they've released so far is a good first step. And we're looking forward to the consultations, which will really be helpful. Excuse me, I did want to say about the, the work plan that was presented tonight. It was almost a year ago, this council decided this was a high priority item, affordable housing. People are suffering in the community, and I just see, I mean, we're waiting, we're going to have to wait another year for the results of the census. And then, we're going to do a needs assessment. And then, the work plan is calling for looking at a review of our regulatory and non-cost barriers. That won't begin for another year or two. I just don't think that's soon enough. I think we need to act faster. And those are things that we can do. So, that's, that's how I feel about the, the report tonight.
Yeah.
So, there's also, I believe, when they, some of the amendments that are being proposed from the Municipal Government Act also include removing some of the barriers to providing financial incentives to, presently, right now, we're limited to not-for-profit. Or looking at private developers who have an agreement with a housing authority, like Nova Scotia Housing Authority or CMHC, that type of thing, to, to look at how we can waive fees or provide incentives. So, they're looking at enabling municipalities to provide funding directly to private sector for affordable housing. So, there's things like that that are being done right now that when staff are looking at the work plan that was presented to council in June as a result of kind of the Housing Commission's plan, was that we need to take a look at our planning policy and what things we can include within that, that are provided for within the Municipal Government Act. So, including the provision to provide grants for affordable housing and looking at inclusionary zoning and those types of things will be, it's timely now because those are things that we've identified that we want to include in our, in our work plan. The question becomes with, with those things is do we, we start that work now? Or do we include that within our plan review? And I believe the last time council had an appetite to start looking at that as opposed to waiting as well.
Yeah. I, I am, you're not, you're not wrong. I am hopeful that hearing with the proposed development on Glen Allen, that it might be up to 50% of affordable, that's 222 units, when I do the math on 444. That's, that's a really good step forward. And I'm hoping that the tools that the province is starting to talk about. So, yeah, it went before law amendments today to talk about, as the CIO said, giving us the ability to work with private developers. Whereas before, we've only been able to really work on incentives with not-for-profits. And the reality is, there's not a lot of not-for-profits building houses in our region compared to Halifax, where they have a whole bunch of other players. So, I'm hoping that helps. There's always room to do more. We talked before the meeting about when the province steps in with its, its funding. So, just a quick flip from being the last in to one of the first in would be an incentive for developers to go. So, I'm hoping those conversations can take place, phase-in tax, things like that, that we can do. But at the end of the day, every, everything that we offer that impacts our revenue is, now becomes a cost that we have to share to the current taxpayers, many of whom are struggling. So, we have to figure out a way to do that. So, what I looked at in this document was $35 million to build 100, or 1,100 units. That's great. All the incentives are for the developers. There's no financial incentives for municipalities. So, we talk about our Betterment Charge, $1,500 a unit. Well, where do you think that goes? Goes right down to the rental price. So, if, if we, if we waive that for 222 units, we can't afford that. We have to then raise the wastewater fees for our current residents who already just went through a tax rate increase. So, what I'd like to see is the province, as we have this conversation, recognize that we're a partner. We have very limited rent, our, our revenue stream is essentially taxation. So, instead of maybe $35 million all for developers, what if you carved off some of that for municipalities so that they could offer those incentives to the developers, to the property? Again, 222 units times $1,500, that's a lot of money. We need to be at the table with the province. And that's where I think we can move quicker, right? Because that's going to be the discussion we have. When this DA comes to council, there are going to be things that, like every developer, they want the town to do A, B, and C, right? That's their negotiation. We want, we'd like A, B, and C. Well, A, B, and C all cost us money, and we don't have any money. So, how do we, how do we not have that cost us months of time for the potential 222 affordable housing development units? Because time is money and time is, is homes or homelessness for people. So, your, your, your points are, are well taken. We can't, we can't wait years. So, we have to, we have to find every lever that we can pull to make this quicker. And I feel like we're going in the right direction. I feel like we are. Other comments, Counselor McCallum?
So, when, initially, when our staff looked at the affordable, or the homelessness affordable housing issue, we certainly recognized that housing hasn't been on our plates. So, first of all, the financial resources were lacking, but also the skill set. Because our staff are not typically working on that. That's not a skill set that we've really brought to the table. We haven't, we haven't hired based on, on that specific skill set. And I'm not hearing, or maybe there hasn't been any focus on providing, if municipalities are going to be given more power to deal with this issue, where's the training and the knowledge and awareness? I mean, it may be a conference. It may be sitting down with the province and gathering some information and understanding some things. It may be working groups of municipalities that are, you know, kind of bouncing things off of each other or trying to work together to bring more skills and resources to the table. But I think that will be a challenge. Give us money, give us opportunity, but we still have to have the know-how to use it well and do the most for people who are in such a vulnerable state as we can with those dollars and opportunities and so on. So, that seems to be kind of a missing piece of the puzzle for me. As well as the connections, not hearing anything that's connecting kind of the, the webs that we hear about sometimes, the mental health, addictions, education, and dealing with those at the core to try to stop the problem somewhere out here before we're dealing with it in a, in a big cluster. So, that seems to be kind of left out of the plan, but that may be kind of down the road. You know, here's step one, and we'll keep working towards that. And the other thing that concerns me is that it is a, you know, Halifax-centric, and you have to start somewhere, absolutely get that. But there are people in crisis right now, emergencies in rural areas. And like Counselor Callow said, they don't have years. They don't have years to wait. And I'm not hearing anything that addresses emergency need right now. There is no shelter that I'm aware of in the town of Bridgewater where people can go temporarily. You know, where do we send this? Do we send them all to Halifax? Are we creating a different problem if we start sending everyone to Halifax? And what does that do to someone who's in that position when we say, there's nothing here for you? Go to Halifax. It takes them away from family, friends, connections, maybe possibilities of employment. So, that kind of concerned me, that there was no action for people who need it immediately.
No. Counsel, uh, Counselor McCallum? No.
We can switch. Well, no, I don't wish to.
Your turn. Did you, did you want to add?
I just wanted to add that in just two agenda items from here, we'll also be talking about the coordinated access system associated with energy in Bridgewater. But just to put that while there's a number of things in here that, yes, we're saying we need some more information because of that. You know, we don't have some of the missing pieces of the information puzzle. We do have policy, unfortunately, policy is, is more challenging to change overnight. And we have plans to, to dive into some of that. But the energized Bridgewater work that we are doing does get at, you know, trying to prevent the loss of affordable homes here. And so, we'll be talking more about some other energized items on the agenda later. But that does play into, and we do see energized Bridgewater and the work that we're doing to increase the energy efficiency of the housing stock here in Bridgewater as part of the affordability solution. It's not really being talked about as part of the affordability solution in the provincial lens. But when they do talk about funding to, will be provided to deliver services to families at risk of homelessness and as supports for, oh, no, sorry, there was another one around housing supports and, and that sort of thing. That I'm, to me, it felt like they were talking about things like coordinated access without actually using that term. And so, I'm really eager to see the details of those ones because I feel like it's really getting at, you know, how do we coordinate the community services here that are supporting families who are experiencing housing insecurity or are homeless? Because the by-name list was carried out in April, which was one of the pilot opportunities that was talked about in, in the report in March. And that was part of the first step into establishing coordinated access in our region. And there were 140 families, whether it was an individual or a family unit, that were identified in April of this year who are at risk of, at risk of homelessness. That Lisa Ryan and the work that she did brought forward. So, we know that that's part of the equation, and we're doing a lot of work there to move things forward fast.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, well, when I first joined council in 2012 and was on the SHAC Committee, Social Regional Housing Action Coalition, affordable housing was an issue then. But we was looking at safe housing for the families and their children. And I had one call a couple of weeks ago, another one just a little while ago. It's got to the point now where the rents are increasing, and they just can't pay the rent, that they're living in tents, they're moving trailers back home with their families and putting them on their lots to try and survive, basically can't. But waiting two years, like Council, we can't afford to wait that long to help them. They need help now. And it's nice to talk about all this affordable housing, but they need it now. It's no good to them in two years. It'll be well out of the system. And this is where some of that $35 million should go. They should get out and talk to the people that need the help. Instead of saying, we're going to help you in two years. They need it now, and we have to help them now, not two or three years down the road.
Yeah, I, I feel like what, what this is right now is a two-tier, there's two tiers to it, right? So, there's the Halifax, we, we saw this with the rapid, the federal rapid housing money. So, great, it was only for shovel-ready projects, which, which I know the city had a few. Some other communities had them, but there's not a lot. And the reality is, if you have a shovel-ready project, you already have all your ducks in a row. You're all ready to go. It's shovel-ready because your funding's been in place, your builders are in place, everything's in place. So, the money's, money's great. I'm not saying there's no value to it. But it's, it's figuring out why there's not more shovel-ready projects, right? So, go back to provinces, the last one in, not the first one in with money, or a phase-in tax, or all those levers that we can pull. Just, I wanted to go back to your, the shelter comment that you made, because you're 100% right. There's, there's not, if you are facing homelessness in the town of Bridgewater right now, we do not have an emergency shelter for you. So, I know there is funding for the hotel shelter model, but I don't know the, I don't know the details of that. I don't know if it's, like, is the onus on the hotel? Like, one of the ones we have in town to call the province and say, we've got rooms we could use? Is the province going out and calling hotels, saying, what's your vacancy rate? Like, the, the detail, and it goes back to communication. So, who does what? Should the town be calling and saying, we have a few hotels that might be good for this? We don't know because there's not enough detail in this. And, I mean, the housing shortage's just not been overnight. It's been years. And rightly or wrongly, municipalities, it's only been the last few years where we've seen our role in this because it's, it's been a provincial issue. It's been provincial jurisdiction, it's been part of their mandate. They have a department responsible for this. And I can't help but think, due to the lack of real progress over the last decade, municipalities have had to jump in and take on some of this. And it's probably right that we take on some of this. But we aren't the solution, and the province isn't the solution, and the feds aren't the solution. We're all, we all have to be. We're all, we all have to be on the same page, working together. Because I think each one of us has tried independently to try to fix a problem, and they, they never get fixed on our own. So I'll go all the way back to the beginning to say that this is a living document that we're going to hopefully improve our communication with the province on, reduce the timeline so that we're not waiting a year or two years. Hopefully, some of those tools will allow us to speed up projects like the Glen Allen project, provided that, you know, we're not going to cause undue hardship for our current taxpayers. We're also trying to get a project going as quickly as possible for up to two-hundred-and-twenty-two affordable units. Yeah, like, we can't move fast enough, but we need, we need help. Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, it was nice to see the report on six-fifty-four Glen Allen Drive tonight. But how long before somebody can move into the units? How many years down the road is this from happening? The process, we know we need it, we're giving funding for it, but the process is so slow, antiquated, out of date, that it just keeps pushing it out. Does anybody know when somebody would move into one of those units in Glen Allen? What year? Certainly not next year. Will it be before my end of council? Maybe not. So it, it's good news, but we've got to speed things up. It's just taking too much time. The hurt is now.
This doesn't even begin to address the lack of contractors, builders. I don't know who's going to build all these.
No.
I know they're, they're looking at apprentices, but there's everything from material shortages to labor shortages. So you, you could say you're going to build ten thousand units in the next year, but there's nobody to build them, so we have to, we have to...
And no material.
There's a whole bunch of problems. Aren't you glad we're, we're just about a year into, into four years?
I'd be curious about what the task force that the province is creating that will look at affordable housing projects or housing projects within, within Halifax.
Yeah.
So it, it sounds like this, this group is going to be put in place to do approvals of certain types of projects and kind of remove it from the Halifax, say, staff level and put it there. And what lessons they'll learn from that? Like, what are some of the barriers that they're going to discover? Or there may be, there may not be, but it'd be interesting to, to see what, what comes out of that, right? Because I'm sure there will be lessons that will be able to be transferred to other, other municipalities in Nova Scotia to look at that. Because it, it is a concern when it takes a year to two years, and in Halifax, it can take longer depending on where, for a development to even go through the approval process, let alone the construction process, which could be a couple of years. So, yeah, it can give you five years.
Wouldn't it be great if the province just funded a staff position whose responsibility is in Lunenburg County, share it amongst the five municipalities, I don't, I don't know, whose job it is just to look at affordable development projects? Not to do the wastewater studies and all those things, not, not to do the detail that, that Nick has to do or that Larry has to do, but to do that first look at it, so by the time it gets to their desk, the definition of affordable has been set, the terms have been set, it meets the criteria, they know they have their funding in place. So the affordable part is not on our desk, right? All that, it just becomes a normal development for our team without those complexities, because someone who's, and I think you, you said it in terms of the education, Counselor McDonald, someone else has gone through that, checked all those boxes and said, this is, this is an approved affordable housing development for the town of Bridgewater. You just approved your development as if it was normal, and away we go. That's something they could do that would have, I would think, immediate benefit, because part of our delay is, we're busy. And how many, I know you don't have a microphone, how many projects do you have sitting on your desk right now, Nick? Ten?
Twenty.
Ten, twenty, like, like, that's, that's a lot. You're one, one person that has to go through those, right? So that's a lot of work that we now have to add this extra complexity to. Counselor?
I hope that the province understands that they have a willing partner here. From the discussions I've heard at the council table over the past year and tonight, we're willing to help solve this issue, but we do need a lot of help. And we need the leadership of the province involved. And I mean, we're ready now, like, we're ready to talk about it yesterday. Like, we are, we're ready and we're willing, we're not going to fight anything about this. We want to help, be part of the solution, and I hope the province is listening.
I think that's starting to sink in. I, I don't think that's always been the case, but I think that there's been that realization that we have to work on this together and that we're, we're ready. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. Counselor Gier?
For me, it's, I keep coming back to looking at, as we said earlier, and the, what does the affordable, affordable piece mean for a percentage of income? I'm just curious to know if, whose task, well, it'll be the task force maybe, to take on revisiting, looking at the definition of affordable housing, or looking at possibly a different formula? Because even I weigh in on things such as cost of living, look at the cost of groceries, how much they've gone up, the gas, and how that affects one's budget. So I do hope that maybe they revisit the whole formula of how they calculate the affordable housing portion and seeing if it is fair and reasonable, I guess, when they, when they look at how they qualify people and knowing what, what the definition actually means. So I hope some more work goes into looking at the definition, as well as maybe looking at revisiting the formula and how they calculate it. Because a lot of things have changed, and people's budgets are very, very tight when it comes to just putting food on the table and roofs over their head. So I just hope, hope they look at the affordable piece.
I'm really hoping that, that, I know there's a lot of councils, councils across the province, but I'm really hoping that each council has an opportunity to speak with some, it doesn't have to be the minister necessarily for housing, but a staff person who's ready to hear these comments, like, in this kind of forum, not necessarily a council meeting, but whether it's an education session or a discussion session. Because our issues are different from MODL's issues, they're very different from HRM's issues and CBRM's issues and YRMA's issues. So there are things that we can do, like, we've talked about tonight, we can do quickly, but we need the province to kind of get on side, and, and we know that we have other neighboring municipalities where the money component is not the burden. It might be the regulatory or the zoning. So it's, money isn't necessarily the answer. So I, I am hopeful that we get a chance to have that discussion, the seven of us with someone from DMHA sometime. Is that what they're called still? I don't know what they're called anymore. So I'm hopeful. Counselor?
I believe that we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars this year for a housing needs assessment.
Twenty.
So it, it doesn't sound like that will happen. Is there something else we could do with that twenty-five thousand this year to, to help with the affordable housing issue? Will that simply be set aside for next year?
At this point, like, when we, we've identified the things, staff did it earlier, I think, in our report earlier this year about what our work plan actions could be. So the housing needs assessment, you're correct, that's one where we talked, the province has talked about taking the lead on that. And we also wanted to look at it in a regional, with a regional lens, and stats are not until when.
April.
April. So we probably want more up-to-date statistics. We looked at reviewing our policy and program developments, our planning documents, looking at the, you know, having an efficacy role for legislative changes, which it looks like they're doing, community engagement. So there's a piece there that we could be working on with resources to do that. So we could very well take that and repurpose it for looking at our planning strategy and land use bylaws, particularly with these new tools that they're going to provide us through the MGA, that, how could we use those, right? So we could have that, that repurposed for that. Energized Bridgewater is already busy doing the coordinated access and looking at the housing energy management system and those pieces, so that's, that's well-funded. And then the other category we had was in financial support and looking at ways to waive construction and development fees, looking at our current bylaws and policies, are there any barriers there and what funding programs? So that's another piece of work that could also kind of be handed to, to a resource to say, how should we approach this? How should we approach providing incentives for affordable housing through fees? Like, is there some type of formula or some, some way that we could bring that objectivity and perhaps fairness to it when we're looking at applying it to affordable housing projects? So if, if you were to say today, how can we reuse that? It would be to look at those resources to do that policy work and review kind of how we can provide incentives.
Would that require council direction tonight?
If council wants to do that, yeah. You can, or you can ask us to bring back a scope of work that we could then, that might be the best way. And then we could bring that back to you and say, here's, here's what we proposed, rather hire consulting services, or we could talk about whether or not we think that should be in-house, right? But we have to figure that out in terms of hiring someone or contracting that piece out, but we could bring, come back with a plan for you that identified how we could use those funds to do some of that work.
Would you like to make a motion to direct staff to come back with the scope of work for what you're proposing?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Do we have a, a secondar for that, Counselor McDonald? Does everyone understand what's being asked? Yeah? Ready for the question? Counselor McDonald is in favor. Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you for that, it's good. Thank you to the CIO for that. You're not writing it right now, are you?
No, I'm not writing it.
We're, we're still going with this discussion though, but Counselor Thorburn?
Tammy, we done a, a study when we had Lunenburg, Mahombe, Bridgewater, MODL, Winchester in two thousand and fifteen, maybe? And we actually sat down and met with families. So that study was in-depth, inclusive, and that has to be around somewhere with the SHAC group.
Yeah, it is. The planning has it.
So what are you going to try? Do that over again?
No, this should be looking at our, that, that needs assessment is something that we're suggesting. That was done in two thousand and fifteen, so that would have been based on two thousand and eleven stats. So we're suggesting that the housing needs assessment would be done after the Statistics Canada numbers come out in twen, in, in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay.
So what we're suggesting is, is that we know that the province is coming out with inclusionary zoning for municipalities, they're looking at new incentives that we can, that we can use to entice affordable housing, whether it's taxes or grants. And we know that there's ways that we can waive fees now. So how should we, how should we do that and go about, go about that? So it's about bringing in those resources, whether it's contracting or hiring someone that would look at what policies we could put in place here, using the tools that we have.
Okay. Yeah, well, I knew we had done that when I was on that.
Counselor McDonald?
Would it make sense to connect with maybe some of the local service providers, Bridgewater Police, organizations that might have information in and around this issue? And let them know, we're going to be doing some assessments, and there's probably going to be some programs and things available, maybe funding that we're applying for. We're going to be looking for information from you and giving them an idea of what type of information we may need at some point, because it seems that information hasn't been well-collected in some of these areas. If we let them know in advance, we may be looking for information around increases in domestic violence or homelessness or an increased number of requests at, at housing, you know, is it more in seniors, is it more in different age groups? If we let them know now, then they can start kind of collecting some information that might be useful to us so that we aren't on, you know, seeing there's a funding application, we don't have the information we need to apply for that fund, and it's going to take us a year to gather it.
I sense our director has, has got the answer for you.
Well, not necessarily the full answer, but just to say, that is part of what coordinated access is going to start to provide to the region as a whole, because it's not going to be relegated just to the town of Bridgewater, because people come and go across the municipal boundary, you know, live and moving between where they live. So that is something that, that coordinated access will start to be providing more information around those types of things, because it's dealing with housing insecurity and people at risk of homelessness, so.
We also know that CMHC collects great swaths of data for communities over ten thousand people. So that is why we need to get to ten thousand and one people. And we're on our way, but, and, and I'm only half kidding, because once you get that, there's a whole door that opens of information that CMHC just does. Rental data, housing security data, all that stuff that other communities have at their fingertips. I believe they do it annually. Do they not?
I think so.
Yeah, like, that's, that's a lot. That's a powerful tool that we are, we and Lunenburg, Mahombe, all these communities that, that are around us, they're, we're shut out of. So I'm really hoping, as the census data works its way through, we're, we're, we're close, and maybe, maybe it's, maybe we should count some people and, and if they're, if they're off by a little bit, just to make sure, because we might be at ten, I think we're at ten thousand.
CMHC collects that kind of information. Would it be reasonable to assume that maybe Genworth or, or is it Canadian, I forget what the, the other company is called, that they might collect data for their own uses that they might be willing to share?
I think, I don't think there's any harm in asking. Certainly, maybe it's even taking it to the NSFM. I mean, there's a number of communities that are our size, and, you know, instead of going, going back to the, well, five or six or forty-five times, it would be nice to kind of get together and say, we all require this data.
Sorry, one last thing. Property Services, PBSC, Property Valuation Services Corporation also collects data. It's slight, I don't know why, it seems to be a little bit different than the CMHC data, and it might be around timing and collection and things like that, but they do collect annual data. And when we made that request in the winter after, I believe it was the Director of Finance raised it when we were doing the strategic planning session. And so we made the request, and they, they did share it. It's not something that's shared regularly with municipalities, but it's available upon request. And so it was, it did have a wealth of information, but I think there's, there's work that needs to be done to sort of clean it up and really understand what that data's telling us. Because it's not specific to, it's from taxation purposes that it's collected, it's not specific to, you know, housing affordability issues.
So there's, that's interesting, just because PBSC is ours, right? It's, it's a municipal, like, I don't know how else to describe it. Isn't it a municipally-owned corporation?
It is.
So we should all just be getting that data. So I, again, I'm looking to our executive member of the NSFM to, to maybe, that, that should be requested. Any other?
Just, just out of curiosity, in your conversation with the premier, did he indicate where the eleven hundred new affordable units across the province were being built?
No.
So my understanding last week was that these were tenders that were actively out and waiting to be awarded. So you would think in the tender that, or the tenders, it would tell you where they wanted them built.
And the thirty-five isn't new, right? It was twenty-five from the previous government with an additional ten. So that's, I think, why there's tenders already out, right? Because it's old money.
My understanding is that there are locations known.
Yeah, okay.
So it may, I don't know if it's...
Are they all in student housing at the NSCCs?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no. But they should be able to, and I, I, I'm not too sure if there's a barrier to announcing it right now where they are, but they, they should be able to soon, that's my understanding. Because it was, as you say, it was part of the, the funds that were announced earlier, and they did proposal calls for, for the projects, and those are ready to be wrapped up.
But they're that rapid housing-type shovel-ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. Yeah. We could go on this all night, talk about student housing, the need for student housing. I've had conversations with the President of NSCC, but the need for student housing, like, there's a whole bunch. So this has been a very good discussion, so. Oh, just right, right when I'm...
Sorry.
Working on my phone.
Just one more thing, and I, I kept thinking about this today, and I get corrected at home quite often, that we should stop using the word homeless, it's houseless now. People have a home, they're living in a home, even if it is a tent or whatever, it's houseless, you're houseless.
No, fair point.
Yeah, cool.
People make the home. Any other comments? Any other comments on that? Not that, but on this discussion, this has been good. So there is a meeting Wednesday for mayor's wardens with the deputy minister responsible as law, as well as the assistant to the deputy minister. I can't remember what Mark's title is, but.
Yeah.
So I will, or, or the deputy mayor, because you're on an executive capacity, one of us will be updating council on anything that comes out of that. And if the opportunity presents itself to talk about some of the things we talked about here tonight, we will definitely be doing that. Good discussion, folks. Thank you, Council Caldwell for that motion. We'll get that all rolling. Our next item, 10.2, Grants to Organizations. So in your package, you have four recommendations from the Grants Organizations Committee. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Cocklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for the September 30th intake period as follows. 5,000 to YMCA of Southwest Nova Scotia, 2,000 to VON Canada Nova Scotia Branch Lunenburg Site, 2,000 to South Shore Sexual Health, and 1,500 to South Shore Pipes and Drums Association.
Thank you. Do I have a secondar? Seconded by Council Thorburn. Discussion on those? Council Cal- Caldwell, sorry.
I will say, I'm a longtime member of the Y supporter, so I love the Y, but I do have a question. So why are we funding a grant for operational expenses? Is that something we typically do? Because I would think the Y has money for its own operational expenses.
This has been an ongoing, is that what you were going to say?
No, no. Well, we talked about that.
Okay, you go ahead. No, no. Because you're on the committee, right? So you go ahead.
This is, this has been an ongoing debate in council, quite honestly about, so it's going specifically to the youth center on King Street. But it's been an ongoing debate about why this isn't just a permanent line item. This is the path that we continue to go down.
So that, that becomes the debate around the council table is if every year we're giving you the same grant, why not just make it, either make it a line item or you say to whatever organization, and not specifically saying the Y, we've given you money, you should be up and running, now be self-sufficient. So I guess that's, that becomes the question is, are we, are we always going to fund this? And if we are, then why don't we just add it into the budget?
Excuse me, maybe we need to look at the, the terms of the, the Grants to Organizations?
We certainly can again.
Is that, oh, we've already done that?
Oh, this has been a painful, painful process. This goes back to, I mean, I remember, we used to debate grants once a year at budget. It was a list as long as my arm and we would go line by line by line. And then we whittled it down to an intake period four times a year based on a set of criteria and then refined it down again and again. And we've done it a little bit more recently.
Yeah, we did.
I mean, I think we're all open to looking at it again because this does raise that issue of, of why isn't it sitting there next to a couple of others where we've just said we're going to give them X number of dollars every year?
I haven't been part of it in the past, so I'd be happy to do that, but if it's, I don't know the history here, maybe there's no appetite on the council table for that.
We did bring it down to two periods a year now.
Oh, that's right, from four to two, yeah.
So we're getting there.
I mean, there's also, if, if Council McGinnis was here, if former Council McGinnis was here, he would tell you that we're using taxpayer money to give to an organization that probably should just be going to the taxpayers to say, we need, like let the taxpayer decide whether to fund it or not, right? So there's, there's that. I know a lot of councils across the province have said, we're not giving grants. So if you want a grant, we'll give you a letter of support, but then you should be going to whatever, a mail-out campaign or you know how you, like I was at, I was at GAOs today and upon checkout, do you want to give $2 to the South Shore Hospice? That's, that's their mechanism for getting that instead of taxpayers saying, I don't want to give to this, but we're saying, well, we're going to give it to, give it on your behalf. So maybe we do need to have another discussion. We can always talk about it and maybe nothing changes, but we can, we can maybe in the new year.
Yeah.
Run out of meetings for this year.
Hire two budgets or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's very hard to say no to supporting a very good youth program on King Street. And that's the, that's the trick.
So you could put them as a line item in your budget and work your way towards no grants. I mean, there's ways, it's harder. But we have a motion on the floor, we have a move and secondar. Good questions. Loved, loved the debate. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is Award of EOI 2021-01 Delivery of Coordinated Access System Services for Bridgewater.
Okay. So coordinated access service process and delivery came twice in the spring to council. And at that point, it was requested that we go out and ensure that there is no other organization beyond, through the community engagement that has happened. And the community wanted to set up a, a third party standalone organization to provide the coordinated access service. So we went through the process, we put out an expression of interest and this is to award that, I guess, the next step of the process. So I forgot my notes, but anyway, the service provision requirements related to coordinated access were provided very clearly stated in the expression of interest. I'm not going to go through all the different points here, but really it's about following the reaching home, Canada's homelessness strategy and deliver services came with that. Implement and set up the homelessness, the homeless individual and families information system, HIFIS database, which is part of the smart cities sort of mechanics as we're thinking about it and really integrate coordinated access and energized Bridgewater services within the network. So really taking an energy poverty reduction lens to the service and deliver service to 350 households between start and the end of, end of service March 2025. There's a number more of the service provision requirements. And the South Shore Open Doors Association was the sole respondent to the expression of interest. And the South Shore Open Doors Association, or SODA, is that third-party organization that has been formed out of the work by the Governance Action Team that was part of the energized Bridgewater coordinated access work that was completed earlier this year. So they have, the Governance Action Team recommended that standalone organization and they have formed as a nonprofit organization. They're governed by this particular board of directors who are going to act as that lead. And so those board of directors include the following listed here on this slide. And if you don't mind, I am going to get my notes. Thank you. So this board represents a range of diversity of experience, both lived experience and, and technical and trained experience and, and deep experience in working with vulnerable populations. And the board itself is also committed to embedding anti-racism practices into the organizational policies and procedures and really base a lot of their work on lived experience, bringing that to the center of the work that the South Shore Open Doors Association will be doing. Within the expression of interest, one of the other main considerations for, for council that we discussed at length in the spring was around the reliance of this new organization on funding being provided through energized Bridgewater and that you wanted to ensure, as, as we all did, that whatever is being set up to support this service and is being catalyzed here in our community because of energized Bridgewater, isn't reliant upon money that has a fixed end time. So they are proposing the following, the following financial sort of model where they are more reliant at the start and less reliant by the end of fiscal year 2025, 26. And with that funding predominantly coming from the Infrastructure Canada funding for energized Bridgewater, while they start, while they start up and seek additional funding from community, local, provincial and federal bodies. And if we read into some of what was proposed in the housing strategy, I would say that this would be an excellent opportunity to pilot housing and homelessness support services in a rural community, if anybody from the province is listening tonight. So staff are recommending that town council direct staff to proceed into contract negotiations with the sole proponent for EOI 2021-01 Delivery of Coordinated Access System Services for Bridgewater to South Shore, with South Shore Open Doors Association and return to council with a draft service delivery contract for consideration.
Thank you. Discussion on that, any questions of staff?
Yep. So what will the service contract include, like timelines and?
It'll include timelines, it'll include the targets for, for how service will start to deliver and, and connect with, with those households, the, the targets that we have set out through energized Bridgewater. It'll also include recording mechanisms and all the rest.
How often do you think they'll be coming back with reports? Or updates, I guess?
I don't have that at my exact fingertips right now, but probably quite regularly. I do know it's not just a once a year. There'll be a direct. Also, you know, as we think about energized Bridgewater, the coordinated access system is one of the main doors through which people experiencing energy poverty will be able to walk through to, to find out about energized Bridgewater and to, to obtain service and assistance when it comes to energy poverty. So that will be one of the main doors that we will find where people are living in energy poverty and where those homes are in our community, that then we can try to target the, the energy efficiency retrofit services to try to improve the quality of living where they are. So we'll be, there'll be regular, they're, they're part of our service delivery model.
Does that help you? Other questions? Council for you?
So are they having a, a need for a space to meet? Like this SODA that will be meeting regularly, but I, I guess a location, a venue, do they need?
They will be, and, and it's, you know, a number of the, the members of the board and the active members who are, members of the community who are active in setting it up, they are, a lot of them are with other service organizations. So I know that they're looking at shared models for space and things like that, but those details still need to be worked out. Without the contract, there isn't a, a firm income at this point in time. So right now it's being done by the volunteer board members until they're in a position where they're able to hire staff.
Other questions?
So, yeah, sort of. So in the contract, will there be safeguards in place? I mean, we saw sort of what happened with the PACE program where there wasn't this uptake and I guess will there be safeguards in place to say, you are not meeting X targets therefore X, Y, and Z? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we do have a sense though, having done the by-name list, which is part of the process that a community would go through before they set up a coordinated access system. You know, with the by-name list survey that was done in April, there's 140 people who were in need of assistance. They may not all be experiencing energy poverty, but they, they would all be in need of some type of service referral from the coordinated access system, so.
Other questions or comments? Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn, thank you.
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to proceed into contract negotiations with the sole proponent for EO112021-01 Delivery of Coordinated Access Services, System Services for Bridgewater, Social Open Doors Association, and return to council with a draft service delivery contract for consideration.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item, 10.4, Strategic Priorities Update and Quarterly Reports. And I'll turn it over to the CIO.
So you have included with your agenda the strategic priorities update, a revised chart, as well as the quarterly reports. It was my intention just to give you the highlights of the strategic priorities. And if you have any questions with respect to the quarterly reports, we do have some, some of the departments represented here and if, if questions can't be answered, we'll get to the answer. So in terms of the highlights for the priorities, with the wastewater strategy master plan, the big, the big item on our plate for the second quarter was the Disaster Mitigation Assistance Fund application. That was due, I believe, last week. So that got submitted and that was a collaborative effort amongst the energized community development, engineering and administration. So it was a pretty big project and we'll see, see if we're successful getting that in. Waste water or sewer rate transition, we haven't had any progress on that during this, during the second quarter and we're targeting the fourth quarter to have a transition strategy brought forward to council on how we transition to a user pay. In terms of the wastewater strategy, the thing to do there is to have a look at our planning policy review and align it with our wastewater limitations. And we're targeting the third quarter to bring back a report to council on that. Exit 12A, the Business Park, master plan and market analysis. So we had a workshop with council during the second quarter. There were two workshops held during discussion session to look at land use and marketing. And from that, we have concluded that there are some planning and policy and land use bylaw changes that we will be making to align council's expectations with what they wish to see for land uses with the documents that we have for the land at Exit 12A. And we'll have that in the third quarter. We're targeting to, once we have the land uses defined and approved by council, we're targeting an appraisal in the fourth quarter to have the land appraised, once we've identified the uses that impacts, impacts that. And a marketing strategy will then come forward in the first quarter of 2020, 22. Economic Development Strategy, all counselors should have been contacted by our consultants by now that we engage to work with council on developing that strategy. And that's part of the stakeholder engagement. So there's a survey out right now and it's been, Patrick's been kind of blasting that out there, so our public are aware of it and citizens and businesses are encouraged to complete that survey. And we have a workshop scheduled for the end of November to work with council at the start of the development of the economic development strategy and we'll have that feedback that'll help inform council with that. Energized Bridgewater is on the agenda later tonight to talk about the rescope, but council did authorize us to pursue a re-scoping there that would focus the program on, on the key goals or deliverables and reduce the reporting outcomes to, to help refocus us on those deliverables. Asset management, that's one where we have made an application to FCM for funding. We're still waiting to hear whether or not we've been successful there, but we do have funds in the budget. So we've started, the committee has been revived and renewed. We're entering, we've entered a mentoring program with Kings County to look at, you know, their lessons learned and how they went about approaching asset management so that we can give that some thought before we go full steam ahead. And we're looking at going out to market to have professional services to help us develop an asset management policy and a, a plan. The, the accessibility plan, the coordinator, regional coordinator was hired in the first quarter and management's met with the coordinator, actually just a few weeks ago, to talk about the development of a work plan for the town of Bridgewater and how we can meet the standards that are coming out and guidelines that are coming out from the province with respects to accessibility. So we're targeting the third, end of the third quarter to have sketched out for you some form of a plan. And that will help inform budget deliberations as we move forward. The bid, there is a survey that was prepared and an info kit and both Patrick and Allison had been meeting with the steering committee, a group, group of, of business owners within, representing the area to talk about the formation of a bid. And there's still some work to be done there and, and we're thinking perhaps in the new year, we'll be able to report back with where the interest lies within the business community for a bid. Affordable housing, we talked about tonight. So if you turn to the next page or scroll down to the next page, this is the revised strategic priorities chart. So this shows you kind of what we've accomplished and what, what's been added since we reviewed this last. So you can see under Exit 12A Business Park, we've had the workshops. So now we're at the point of amending the MPS and IUB, having the appraisal marketing plan. So that's kind of where we're going to focus and that will be the priority there. Tonight, under. Tonight, under affordable housing, under the, the next, we'll add policy review and incentive review and put, so we'll define what we're doing under affordable housing. Under records management, under the CAO's office, that's changed to be policy. So we have, all users now have LaserFuse software, and we've had some training and we've gone live with it. And now we're going to bring forward a policy to council on records retention and update that. And fire department nonprofit society is, is another kind of operational thing we're doing. And you can see what's been taken out of that box that's been completed. Under community development, transit to Osprey Village is something that council has asked us to work with MODAL on in terms of looking at the feasibility study in the scope of work and, and having staff assigned to work with them on that. So Mackenzie and Matt are involved in that and will be working with MODAL. And we've added in, it's, it's not a strategic priority, but something that will take some time, is the Cornwallis Street renaming. So Nick's, Nick's got that one in his, in his area. And then under engineering, council has since added in the winter maintenance pilot for the level of service on sidewalks and, and bus stops. So we talked about what if we did use that spare sidewalk plow and could we, could we improve our level of service and our extra spare equipment? So we're adding that in as a work initiative for this, well, hopefully not till the fourth quarter. And then the electric bus feasibility study, which we got funding for, staff are, are working on that as well. So that's what's been added in, in addition to the nows and next priorities that you have. And if council's agreeable to those changes to our priorities chart, a motion would be well received, shall we say, to approve those.
First, are there any, are there any questions on those? Council Caldwell?
Just the, is it called disaster mitigation funding application?
Yep.
That you were working on? So thanks to our CAO and all the staff that sort of dropped everything and made that a priority, that's a potential game changer for the town. Any idea when we might hear about that?
Allison didn't think we'd hear about that till probably in the new year. Yeah. And if we don't, and, but they do have another intake in June as well. So if, if we're not successful in this round, we can reapply for the second round as well. But she, when I asked her, she didn't think it would be probably, I think it was February or March, when she thought we would, would hear something back.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion to, to accept the revised strategic priorities chart? Deputy Mayor Tanner, seconded by Council Frasier. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Did you, did you have a question?
No, I'll, I'll email. It'll be easier to email.
Okay. I always know, I can always see you out of the corner of my eye, like, Andrew's got a question. No, no, don't be sorry. Our next item is Community Works Program, Grant a Museum Administrator, Community Navigator Position. Is that Mr. Hurdle going to update us on this one?
Sure. This is really quick and good news, council. Allison, our grants coordinator advised this past, I guess, two weeks ago now, that we were successful in receiving a $25,000 grant through the Community Works Program the Province of Nova Scotia runs. And the intention of staff, unless there are any objections from council, is to use that $25,000 and leverage that to essentially make our museum administrator position a full-time position. You'll recall that we had come to council last December, I believe it was, asking for both our engagement coordinator and museum administrator positions to become full-time. Council decided it only had enough money to do one of those positions full-time and asked us to go back and hunt for some money to kind of expand that administrator position. And we're happy to report back that we have done that. So essentially, the pitch is that the museum administrator will become a museum administrator and community navigator under the terms of that grant that we received. So 50% of the job will be museum administration duty, looking after the collection, that kind of thing, day to day at the museum. And the community navigator portion is kind of cool because it will essentially use placemaking as a lens through which to engage new citizens or prospective new citizens who are interested in coming to Bridgewater. So folks who relocate to our community, who are looking to connect with stakeholders or organizations and really find their place in Bridgewater, will now have this individual who'll be able to, you know, set up programming for them and go out and work with the business community and again, those, those stakeholder organizations and make sure that new community members feel welcome and can integrate quickly into Bridgewater.
That is fantastic. I know we've been talking about something like that for quite some time around various council tables, so that's, that's good, good news. Questions, comments from council, Council McDonald?
So assuming that budget is for a partial year, if, if there was no grant next year, what would a full year look like for an increased contribution from the town?
It would be an increase of $25,000. It would essentially be the value of the grant this year.
Oh, that would cover the full, okay.
From what Allison has told us, that grant comes around every year, so we can continue to reapply for it. And that is certainly staff's intention to continue to try to fund that partially with provincial dollars.
Good. Other questions?
In addition to that, would that be done prior to budget discussion? Because if we don't know it's being funded, then we have to put money in our budget to fulfill that position for another full year.
I don't know when, I don't think the application intake is before budget, is it?
It's, the one that we successfully completed is October to October. There, it may be like other provincial programs where there are multiple intake periods throughout the year. I'd have to talk with Allison about that.
So if there's not, and we don't get the grant, council can always decide to, or from reserves or something, like we can, we can find the money somewhere.
You could do a budget adjustment mid, mid-year, or you can budget as if you're not getting the grant, or you can, so you have a couple options there. We may be able to give you an evaluation of, of how successful we've been prior to you approving the budgets, so you can make that decision.
But that run from October to October?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. It doesn't line up with our budget here.
It doesn't run up to the budget here, so we're into the third quarter before we'd have to rebuild or renew it anyway.
But we have options. We don't necessarily have to end the position if we don't get the grant, right? So there'll be tools, if we see value in the position, to maintain it through other mechanisms.
It's just a question of whether or not it's full-time, basically, and whether that community navigator component stays in place. Like we have budget already for the museum administrator portion.
Right.
It's just that community navigator portion.
That, that's the one I'd love to see an evaluation on after our first full year, let's say three quarters of a year, because I know we've, like I said, we've been asking for something like that around the table. Many communities have it. So love to see the impact on that and where that goes.
Absolutely. We can do that, yeah.
Other questions? Doesn't require?
No, that's just from information.
So, Council McDonald?
We actually have a check-in before budget. And just, you know, it doesn't have to be like a full report, just so that we can decide, do we want to put the money in the budget in case we don't get the grant, or do we want to deal with it when it comes next October?
Yeah, it'll be pretty preliminary at that point. We're probably in a position where we're not going to be hired until close to the calendar new year. But we'll still have, you know, theoretically, two and a half, three months worth of activity to report back on.
Yeah. We'll make sure, we'll make sure we get something. Yeah, for sure. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item in there is we have the briefing notes from the October 18th discussion session. So we had a fantastic discussion on the traffic operations study, and that document is online, I believe posted on our website. So it certainly was more interesting than I thought it would be. The pictures didn't hurt, like, I know that sounds, that sounds weird, but I, it certainly, it made it easier to understand what was normally a dry subject, that, you know, this is what it is, is what it could be. So I think people would find it very interesting, especially when you read how many cars per hour go through some of these intersections. High and Victoria, was it 600 cars an hour? Turn that corner. So I know when I tell people that it's, you know, it's 30,000 cars a day coming to Bridgewater from outside Bridgewater, I know I have a lot of people that roll their eyes, but those are the traffic counts, that's who they are. When you tell people that the old bridge is 10,000 cars a day and the new bridge is 14,000 car trips, I should say, right? So if I cross, I cross the bridge, say, four times a day, that's four. But that's the volume of traffic we have in this community. Like High and Victoria, 600 and something, almost 700. You knew that, because, Council Thorburn, because you had mentioned it, but that's almost 700 an hour. It's crazy. Like we are a busy, busy town. So, and it was interesting to know that the lights, we, I know we get calls from people all the time, you know, I waited five minutes at the light. Well, we don't have any lights that are five minutes long, but we know that we have some lights we need to improve. They're all working as expected, which some would argue we don't, we would like to expect something different. And we know we, we have, there was some low hanging fruit in terms of being able to make things a little bit smoother in town with, with one particular street and one particular set of lights. So I hope people will read the, read the report, but I thought it was, I was fascinated. I think council had lots of great questions, too. We had a good discussion on it. Council Thorburn?
It would appear, my driving around, that there may have been a couple of changes done already, Timmy. Was anything done? Can you comment?
I'm not aware, but there may have been some, some low hanging, I can check.
Some little light seems to be a little bit longer, and flashing light doesn't seem to come on. There's nobody in the turn, in that turn lane.
I know they were, they were working in a couple of places. I'm looking at, at Patrick. I know they were working in a couple of places, but that was roadwork, like the, the Victoria and York today, but that was roadwork, right? That wasn't lightwork. But I know that-
The signals are different.
Our engineer was going to go out, I think, and, and to deal with, the, the number one thing that came up, I think, at every intersection was the, the time for someone to walk across the street was too short.
Yeah.
So I think he was going out almost immediately to look at adjusting that, so maybe that's what's, what's changed.
Yeah. Steph will be bringing back an implementation plan, though. That does outline longer-term capital versus some of the easier things to do in the short term.
Question? Anyone else have questions? All right. We're down to business arising and unfinished business, 11.1, recommendation for the PACE program financing terms.
Yep. So this one is really quick. It's a, council gave notice at the last meeting that, that at this meeting they'd be considering revisions to policy 89 fees to essentially replace the interest rate for a PACE program. We had varying rates based on 10 and 15 years to a single interest rate of 1%, and that would be effective immediately. All the other program changes that were brought forward as improvements to our PACE program, as a result of the FCM funding, were approved by council at the last meeting for, for implementation. So this was the one outstanding item. And that's a reduction in interest rate that we're able to do because of the FCM funding that we got, that enables us to flow that money through as loans to property owners for energy efficiency upgrades.
This is a good news story. So thinking it's a good news story, knowing there's another addition of the bridge coming out in December, will this be, is there a way to highlight this in the bridge? Okay, perfect. Because, yeah, this is a big change. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Frasier?
Yes, I'll make a motion. That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved the revised policy 89 fees to enable and replace the 10 and 15-year PACE program interest rates with a single interest rate for the clean energy financing program set at 1% effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Coughlin. Further discussion? If there's a question, we call those in favor. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Remember when fees used to be part of bylaws and we had to change a bylaw in order to change fees, and it took months to change fees? Remember that? I don't know why I said that out loud, but I just remember it was just the most painful process. Every item was part of a bylaw, and it would take months to have made that decision. Staff are shaking their heads at me from the gallery. All right. Last item, rescope of Energize Bridgewater timelines update. Mr. McDonald coming back?
The report was actually fairly succinct. So really, we, we last spoke at the August discussion session just around how some of the COVID impacts and the extensive sort of resourcing challenges and the impacts, the sort of cumulative impacts that that's had, were, we did a preliminary feasibility assessment showing that our milestone six targets, which are March 2022, were at risk and not achievable due to some of these challenges we've been experiencing for the past 12, 15 months. So after that discussion with council, we had some discussions, we went into sort of some negotiations with the federal government that were put on hold a bit while there was an election, and then they came back with what the process could be. And that is that the, the contribution agreement that was signed in 2019 has a couple of clauses in there that enable us to, to change some of what's in there, such as the project completion date. And so that is the piece that we need authorization from council to allow our CAO to amend Schedule A1 of the existing contribution agreement to, from March 2025 to March 2026, to give us an extra year to complete. I do have a few of the slides from the, the presentation that we went through in August, and I just wanted to pull up a couple of them because, you know, staff have done a lot of work on assessing what, what this does and what needs to occur, what, what are the various mitigation levers that we have that we can, we can pull to make that happen? And we've done a lot of work to date to really discuss with the team, look at the core pieces, which is that the goals of the program are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to reduce energy poverty in our community, and to reduce and stabilize energy costs for, for people in our community. And so with those in mind, we reviewed all the different timelines and the components and all the rest, and worked with Infrastructure Canada around this one-year request to extend the project completion date as a way that we can really bring focus to the core program areas, so coordinated access, the housing energy retrofits, the financing mechanisms to go with it, and the data connected technology piece, and reduce some focus on areas that were, we've discovered that there's either barriers to financial or regulatory, such as with community energy, or are really operational, like the mobility component, and replace some of the smaller program components with some alternatives. There's no reduction in our overall target of how many homes and households in our community that we need to target with this program, and that's 350 overall life of the program. We're really clear that there's no additional funding available from Infrastructure Canada under the smart cities program. If we want this one-year extension, there's, there's no additional funding through smart cities. But also that council was really clear that there's no additional municipal funds beyond what's already been committed. So whatever's been committed needs to be, needs to take into account that extra year if we need it. Our ACOA funding agreement does have some flexibility, and there's always going to be new opportunities that may present themselves. And so all of that, we will always be looking for those new opportunities. And just to show, to make sense of Schedule A dot two of the contribution agreement that was attached to your report, basically, we were trying to report on 21 different outcomes, and we're paring it down. Because what we realized was with some of these 21 different outcomes is that reporting on, on that type of impact required partners and things that were well outside of our control, such as our partnership with public health, that has been wholly focused on pandemic response for the past 18 months. And, and so the work that they had committed to in partnership with us is not on their work plan anymore. And we really needed to ensure that there's integrity in our system, and there still is, but that we're reporting on less and still achieving the same level of impact and outcome that we want to see in our community through Energize Bridgewater. So ultimately, we're requesting that Town Council authorize the CAO to finalize and execute an amending agreement to Schedule 1A and exchange the final project completion date from March 2025 to March 2026.
Perfect. Thank you. Very understandable. We've had a few challenges. I'm ready to go. Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Thorburn?
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater authorize the CAO to finalize and execute the amending agreement to Schedule A1 to change the final project completion date from March 2025 to March 2026 for the smart cities challenge contribution agreement.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Coughlin. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. That concludes this meeting. We have an in-camera meeting following this to discuss property, contract negotiations, I guess it is, under the MGA. So thank you for staff for sticking around. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Council Thorburn, seconded by Council Frasier. We are adjourned.